At this time, I'll call the April 1st, 2024 York County Council Meeting to Order. At this time, I'll recognize Tom Aldert from District 1 for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come together today asking for your guidance, your wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us encourage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow close as a group and nurture the bonds of the community. We pray for everybody's safety as we go through this holiday season and the joy of spending time with your family and friends. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, and you'll be met with our county attorney who will give you your oath of office. We have Jay, I apologize in advance by mispronounced names, Jay Fuse, Board of Assessment Appeals, District 1; Rob Cameron, Board of Zoning Appeals, District 1; Charles Williams, Catawba Regional Council of Governments; Catherine Williams, York County Culture and Heritage Commission, District 7; Kevin Taylor, Catawba Regional Workforce and Investment Board; David White, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. As you make your way forward, on behalf of the council, all of us want to thank you for your time and effort in serving on this committee. You do it without getting paid, and you rarely get thanked, and tonight we want to thank you for the work that you do for the county.
Thank you. Chair. Thank you all, and I give those sentiments to you all who've been down here and serving for the county, that it's very important to the business of our government. And your willingness to serve, to impart an oath of office and to be gracious right here and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I'm duly qualified, fully qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, exercising the duties of the office, providing the best marketability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. Again, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you again for your service to the community. We do not have any appearances tonight, and no one has signed up for the public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Actually, I think we need a motion in a second for the consent.
You want to pull out?
At the last minute, I've been told they don't want a deferral.
No.
No deferral.
Okay.
Motion in a second on consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes, just one quick point. I am going to vote no, but only because of number eight. I have voted differently in the past. The basis I used to vote against is zoning change recently. I'm applying the same number eight, but I don't want to pull it out. But that's the only reason why I'm voting no to consent agenda.
Consent agenda usually is a matter of accord, and if there's a matter, an issue and dispute needs to be pulled out so that the consent can be unanimous.
It's not really, it's not a dispute, it's just I'm explaining my vote. I can pull it out if you want me to.
I think he's explained his vote. He can vote no if he wants to vote no.
Yeah.
I do have some other comments on the rezoning action, number four. And this is in my district. It is a rezoning action from RUD to LI in District 5. For folks that are listening online, and for folks that are here for that specific rezoning, there was a lot of work that was done by the applicant to help determine a solution that would fit the community's needs. And he was able to get the approval of everyone who's adjacent to his property for the proposal that he submitted. I just want to make sure that I put on the record and ask the question, when it comes to what's been proposed, there are deed restrictions connected to this rezoning that limit a significant amount of uses in LI, and I just would like to make sure that that's part of the record, that that's clear.
That's right. There's express limitations, not only in the zoning item for council, but in the covenants and restrictions that are going to be filed with the Corke Corp. Register of Deeds Office. And those not only will be covenants and restrictions on the property, they'll be included as specific deed restrictions in a subsequent conveyance, advance or subdivision of the parcel.
And all of these listed here in the consent agenda are items that are specifically prohibited in that area and run with the land. The other item that I wanted to make sure that I spoke out against, because I had some folks who called me, and I'm fine with it remaining in consent agenda as the applicant is as well, is number 11 in consent agenda. This was to provide third reading to rezone from AGC to RUD, a 4.84 acre portion of a 9.84 acre parcel in District 5. This again was another parcel that the community worked real hard. I think they understood that here's an individual who had 15 acres, and at the end of the day, he's going to have three homes. So it would be one home per technically five acre parcel, which there are some discrepancies there with how we do the right-of-way acquisition. But my understanding is that the deed restrictions on this parcel would only allow for one parcel on the 4.84 acre parcel, and that these deed restrictions would run with the land as well as be marked on the zoning map to reflect that this is not a standard RUD, but it has deed restrictions, so that when recommendations are made, that staff is fully aware of the fact that this is not an RUD four acre parcel land. So I just wanted to make sure I get that clarification on the record.
What was that stipulation about it not an RUD?
It has to be rezoned to RUD, but it is typically an RUD allows four. In this particular case, the applicant has agreed to a deed restriction of one unit on the 4.84 acre parcel, and so it needed to simply be reflected on the map by a hash mark so that staff understands that this is not. Typically, when staff makes a recommendation, they look at, is this RUD in the middle of this area that's AGC? In this particular case, it was so close to an AGC amount, and this is only one unit, that this would put the property owners and the staff on record that this was subject to deed restrictions, which staff's required to honor if they're aware of that.
But does it, are we saying that we don't want RUD in the area?
I think what we're saying is that this RUD is a little bit different, because RUD would allow one home to one acre, and that's not what the applicant's doing. The applicant is doing one home to 4.84 acres.
Because it's deed restricted.
Right. And so I think sometimes staff will give a recommendation to say, here's an RUD in the middle of AGC, but in this case, this really isn't that case. It is pretty much as close to AGC as you can possibly get to keep the flavor in the area of the area. If there's any, if anything that I've said is incorrect, I would like for staff to let me know that or legal.
That's the correct recitation of the condition.
Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. Move now to our first public hearing item, found on page 14 of the agenda. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-10, tax map number 255-0000-083 and 255-0000-010, to rezone from RUD to AGC, 3.63 acre portion of two parcels in District 3. Mr. Bono?
Yes, this application does cover two parcels and two relatively large parcels at that, but the actual area to be rezoned is just over three acres. This is off of Beersheba Road. So here's the hatching there, you can see in black covering the current RUD area. That's the area to be rezoned to match the AGC district that encompasses the rest of the two parcels. And the applicant intends to do some internal property line changes in the future, and this will make that a lot easier if it's all in one zoning district. So staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map for the area. The AGC district is present, adjacent and throughout the area and on both of these parcels, and it would eliminate the split zone status of the two parcels by seven to zero vote. Planning Commission likewise recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing?
So, yeah, real quick, John, what is it currently, is there anything on this property at this point? Is this all open, or is there any homes on this?
I believe there is at least one home, and if they subdivide in the future, they would have to abide by all the regular zoning rules of, yeah, one home per property.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second. Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to item number two of public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-12, tax map number 251-0000-125, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 5.09 acre portion in District 3. Mr. Bono?
Yes, this is another similar application where we've got a split zone parcel here. This one on Cedar Grove Road is a mix of AGC and RUD, and the applicant is seeking to go the other way to rezone the balance of the AGC portion of the parcel to RUD, and the intention there is to create two lots to subdivide this one lot into two. Staff recommends approval. Now, this is inconsistent with the comp plan and future land use map. RUD is not generally appropriate for the agriculture or future land use designation that's on the map here. However, RUD is adjacent to this parcel and also along both sides of Cedar Grove Road, and there are other similarly sized parcels in the immediate vicinity as well. This would also eliminate the split zone status of the parcel, and by seven to zero vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Are there any questions for staff before we open public hearing?
I'll say my comments, though. I don't have any questions, I just got some comments.
Okay. Any questions?
So, when you're looking to subdivide this thing, is it one access road that's going to, is it a shared driveway on this, or?
I've not seen a conceptual subdivision at this point. I'm not certain of the frontage, but they would have to comply with code, either by having a sufficient frontage for each individual lot, or by a shared easement.
I could make my comment. So this is in an AGC area, and I see some RUD lots in immediate, like you said, in immediate vicinity. AGC requires five acres to build in, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're going from five acres basically down to two point, I mean, two and a half or better on at least one of the lots. I talked about this two weeks ago, and, no, this is not a question, so I'm going, I'll make my comments during that time.
I guess I do have a question. This looks like it's split zone property, so that's something that typically, my understanding from staff is, is that you would recommend rezoning approval where there's split zoning.
Not necessarily if that's the only factor, but that is one of the factors here that led us to recommend approval.
Right, because it's directly adjacent to RUD, and everything across the street from it is RUD.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, so it is still all one parcel? So we're not dividing a parcel?
No. If this rezoning is approved, the applicant's next step would be apply for a subdivision to create two parcels, but that's after this rezoning request.
Okay.
We're rezoning a whole piece to RUD right now.
Correct. The balance that is, yes, correct.
Which typically requires five acres to build a home on.
For AGC?
For AGC.
But it's currently over five acres.
Right. And it's split zoned. It's got RUD.
Yeah.
It's got RUD and AGC within the same parcel. Any other questions for staff before we open public hearing? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? If you want to speak against, if you'll come forward to the podium, give your name and address before you begin speaking.
My name is Cynthia Mooney. I live at 368 Cedar Grove Road. As you can see, the majority of this parcel is agriculture. So I don't understand how the reasoning is that you've got a little bit of RUD, so let's go ahead and make it RUD, because then they want to divide it into two lots, and I'm against that. I sent some emails out, I have no idea if you got them, it's okay. I've got some pictures of the road. It's a South Carolina County road, not very well taken care of. There's no indication of how many cars, there's no car count as how many cars come down that road. There could be five people living in each house with five cars. They could be 10 children going into the school systems. There's just no way to determine that. They're putting an easement on that property, a 25-foot easement. There are other sections that Mr. Sigmund has divided, so the easement can go down into the other sections that are zoned agriculture. And I appreciate everything that y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did she give her name and address?
Yeah. Does she give her name and address? She did. All right. Anyone else wish to speak against this request? If you'll come forward.
My name is Judy Dean Ham, 411 Cedar Grove Road. I own the property beside this, on both sides and behind, that property's behind mine and beside it. And my concern is that once this is changed and they build these two houses, they're building that road back in there. I was over there today and saw part of it, and it continued to build it. I talked with the owner, Mr. Sigmund. He's going to spend, I don't know, $20,000 to build a road just to get back to a property. Now, I think he's going to subdivide, wanting to subdivide all the adjacent property into where he can put many homes back there, and that's what I'm opposed to. You know, if he's putting one house, okay, but I'm afraid he's going to put the adjacent land back there, also wanting to subdivide it into many parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak against?
I'm Chad McKinnon. I own 369 Cedar Grove Road. I own the 22 acres that's on the other side of Mr. Ham there, and the future land that he referred to is what lines up against my property. I own a couple hundred feet of my acreage in the back. I have ag land there just on the other side again of Mr. Ham. And I guess the concern is just kind of an incrementalism of, you subdivide this, then you build a road, you will keep subdividing it back down into RUD, as opposed to being predominantly ag property as mine is. So for those reasons, we're concerned about this sort of incremental creep of the land becoming increasingly RUD with the sell-off of this parcel and then 10 more, 30 more, et cetera. So we're concerned as neighbors just about what's the end game of that road and the future use of that land as it goes all the way back through there, about eighty acres worth. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Tony Smith, 4249 Share Road, Sharon, South Carolina. I am the applicant on this. I, first of all, would like to maybe just clarify a couple things. The property owner by right used an easement to subdivide the two larger parcels behind this one, but from my understanding, they are at splits. This will be the last split of a minor subdivision. You know, you're only allowed five per the recode. Anything over, or six or more turns into a major subdivision. So unless they plan on, or they don't have enough room to ever come back and put a DOT road back there to subdivide anymore. They only have a 25-foot easement that goes back up, so those will be larger AGC tracks. There will be no more splits off of that, as I'm asking to use the last one on this front parcel. It has been split four times, this will be the fifth split. So all we're asking to do here, I'm a local home builder, you know, my guys that work for me, we live in this area. We're not somebody out of Charlotte just coming down to what we call a flock of pigeons, come down, poop on stuff and then leave. So we live here, our guys eat here, our kids go to school here. We are not asking to reinvent the wheel here. I was looking earlier, out of the 17 flyers that were sent out to the surrounding homeowners, property owners, 10 of those are less than what I'm asking to split here, which would be two, three acre parcels. And five of those are less than an acre. There's some that are .52, .98, .81. We're not asking to be that small. I'm not asking for five splits. I'm asking for two, three acre parcels. We're not going to disturb any trees. We're not going to disturb any, any more than we have to. This is an open pasture field, and that's where our homes plan to stay. So I just want to point out also that by right, I can build two dwellings on this AGC zone track now. It just, we can build, by code, two dwellings per track. So as was pointed out earlier, this parcel's split zone, so we're just trying to clean that up, and at the same time, I'll be glad to deed restrict it to no more subdivisions, which I don't think code would allow anyway, so, but I'm not here to upset anybody, but just trying to do two larger nice parcels. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Jeffrey Sigmund, 894 South Beersheba Road. I'm one of the three owners of the property in question. And it can't, the tracks behind it, the six acre, I'm sorry, the eight acre track behind it, man, the 17 acre track will be served by the private driveway, what they're calling the road, but the county ordinance doesn't permit us to expand off of that. You know, it'll be, it'll always be a private driveway. It can't be expanded upon. I hear their concern. I don't like high-density housing either. Believe me, I don't. But if Mr. Smith is going to make two, three acre lots out of that, that seems kind of reasonable, and it does fit what's across the road, and as you pointed out, down the road some too. So I just wanted to mention that, and, yep, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak before we close the public hearing?
Move close.
Second. Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion?
Go ahead, Tommy.
Made a motion. Mr. Atkins, you made the motion.
Well, if we approve first reading, I will take a ride out there and look at it and get a better understanding of exactly what Ms. Smith's talking about.
I do have a quick question, Jonathan, actually, it's for you. So how did this property end up having split zoning on it originally?
So there are a lot of split zone properties throughout the county, and they all have their individual histories. I don't know the specific history behind this one, but a lot of times it can be a matter of court-ordered subdivisions of land due to trusts, things of that nature, or district lines when zoning was first applied countywide, matched things like school districts and roads and streams, and didn't necessarily match property lines. That's not the case anymore. We do zoning districts a little more organized now. So I don't know the specific history on this one, but that's just a general description of how we get to split zoning.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a question, Jonathan. So we've changed some of the zoning, the names of some of the zoning codes. So the properties in the darker green are agricultural conservative. So, but when we're talking about these properties, we're all just saying agricultural right now. But really and truly, we're talking about going from agricultural conservative beyond agricultural down to rural development. Is that right?
Yes, agricultural conservation is AGC, and so the property does have a portion of both AGC and RUD. Now, when we're talking about the future land use designation, that's agriculture. So that's the map on the right-hand side, that's kind of that large chunk of mustard green. So that's the comp plan designation, that's the recommendation for the future land use in the area, but it's not binding, it's not legally binding like the zoning is.
So when we went through the comprehensive land use plan and the determination for that zoning, I just, I'm just trying to, I want to be, I just want to be clear, and I'm going to have some more questions. I'm going to support this first reading, but I'm going to have some more questions about these surrounding properties. So the agricultural conservation is what it is now. That's how it's owned now, right? And the, what is the difference, the technical difference between agricultural conservation and rural development?
So the chief difference is the minimum lot size. So that's generally the reason that folks apply to go from the AGC to RUD is the lot size, to go from a minimum of five acres to a minimum of one acre. There are more uses that are allowed in AGC related to agricultural processing and farming and things of that nature. There's still a lot of those more rural, more agricultural uses that are allowed in RUD by right as well, but there are fewer of them. So there's some overlap between the districts.
So in the most recent comprehensive plan, did we, we change that from what we used to call agricultural to, I mean, what's the difference? I'm just, I'm clarifying, not just for me, but for everybody. What's the difference in what is there now versus what the future designation is?
So with the future land use map and any updates, such as the one we had last year, any of the designation changes there are really informative for you all of how you would like to proceed with development in that particular area, what you would like and what the community would like to see happen there over time. And so that's a recommending document. It doesn't change the underlying zoning at all until an application like this one comes forward. So, you know, the planning piece of it is the long-range vision of the county and the individual zoning components are the nuts and bolts, the legal restrictions of the property. And the zoning should follow generally the comp plan. That's the reason to have the comp plan in the first place. But here, we just have an instance where the comp plan might suggest that this should be agriculture, and maybe RUD is not the best district, but per the staff and planning commission recommendation, we recognize that not only does this parcel have both districts encumbered on it already, but there are other parcels that are zoned RUD directly adjacent and on the other side of the road.
I just know that Councilman Atkins and I worked really hard on the properties that we share in western York County to not, what I call, water down that zoning, not, to not weaken the agricultural zoning and, you know, because the concern is, and we learned this, Tommy, when we were looking at things, and we saw where, you know, the city of York has put a lot of high density, so the county recommended around the city of York that we go with a little higher density ourselves, and then as you go out further than the city. So it just, it concerns me that we still, you know, we didn't, we went the opposite direction on some of our stuff in the comp plan. And so it concerns me here that we're going in the other direction, you know, than what we really preferred in that comprehensive land use plan. Thank you.
That's righty.
So we approved the 2035 comp plan back in 2016, and we updated it just last year. If I remember correctly, staff can help me with this, my recollection, that process takes one and a half, two years, but sometimes up to three, four years to get a good comp plan in place.
So that's accurate.
Okay.
It took us a year and a half in 2016. I was on that committee.
We were smoking then.
Yeah.
I don't know if we were smoking, but we were smoking.
Yeah.
So, and the reason why I always mention the comp plan, always mention the comp plan, you know, a lot of things that staff recommends for or against based off the comp plan. We always get notes that say, hey, yeah, this fits the future land use plan. This is a good idea. Jonathan, what does the, does this fit the 2035 comp plan, what this particular zoning wants to go to?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, I will preference that I talk to- Now, I will preference that I talked to Tony Smith today. He called me about the rezoning. I looked at it, and we went through this, a similar exercise just two weeks ago, just two weeks ago, right here in this council chamber. We went through a similar exercise that the planning commission said, yeah, you should do this rezoning. Staff said, yeah, we should do this rezoning. All the boxes were checked. The same application that's supplied for here, same boxes that were checked two weeks ago, everybody said, yeah, along the way, we should do it. Same application. I went back and looked. Every single check mark, every box was checked two weeks ago. We're here with another application today with the same boxes are being checked. Two weeks ago, we said, no. We said, no, don't do it, because some people felt like the dirt wasn't good enough to build on. And I made the comment, today is this gentleman, where all the facts lined up that says we should do it. Here we are today, all the boxes are checked, but the 2035 comp plan says no. And I want everybody sitting up here that when we go against the facts, that the planning commission says yes, staff says yes, the twenty, comp plan 2035 says yes, but we said no. So, here we are just two weeks later. Planning commission says yes, staff says yes, comp plan says no. Someone made up, someone brought up the fact that, hey, this guy bought this land less than a year ago, knowing it was zoned for this, now he wants to rezone it and make money off of it. Two weeks ago, I said, don't make making a profit in York County a dirty word. Those were my exact words. When someone buys land as a developer to build houses, two weeks ago, this council said, that's a dirty thing. We shouldn't do it. People shouldn't come here and build houses and make money. I looked up the purchase date for this property. So, less than a year ago. If the dates are correct on the paperwork, then I saw a little less than a year ago. Now, we want to split it up, put two houses on it. AGC says one house for five acres. This is five point whatever, and I think it's going to be joined by another piece of property to make it ultimately around six acres, to put two houses on there. I want to vote yes for this. I voted yes two weeks ago. I want people to be able to come and do things that make sense. We had some neighbors speak out two weeks ago. We have neighbors speaking out today. This is not an easy job to do, but it's easy when you, it's easier when you vote things up or down for certain reasons and not the facts. I want this gentleman to be able to build two houses. I want to take in concern what the neighbors are concerned about. There's a concern about the acres behind the property. We don't know what's going to happen there. Speaking about an access road, where's the access road going to go to? Is the acres behind it, is it landlocked if the easement's not given? You know, someone brought up two weeks ago, have we seen the water, the stormwater plan for this property two weeks ago? And I said, you know, we don't ask for a stormwater plan when someone's going through a rezoning. But that was the question. We don't ask what the soil type when we doing a rezoning. So, everybody brought up all these different variables that didn't make any sense why we should say no. I didn't hear anybody ask for a stormwater runoff today. I didn't hear anybody ask where the oil and septic's going. But everybody's lined up to say yes. Everybody's lined up to say yes, and to these residents and neighbors who have some concerns about what's to come, protecting the AGC, and the five acre tracks in the area, the same lighter shade of green that says, hey, we have other lot sizes of similar size to what this gentleman's asking to do in the immediate area. Two weeks ago, staff said, hey, we have similar lot sizes in the same area, and they said, yes, do it, but this council said, no. And I've said two weeks ago, it was going to come up, the exact, and I didn't know this was coming up, but here we are, two weeks later, faced with the same exact thing. But this one's going through, because two weeks ago, someone called around different council members and lobbied to vote against something in my district. I said, we were setting bad precedent by not voting on what the facts said. The facts say this is doable today. The facts said two weeks ago, this was doable two weeks ago for another piece of property, that a gentleman wanted to go from AGC to RUD to put three houses on. It didn't pass. So, this is going to be a real exciting next month to see which council member steps up and says, we're going to do it in spite of what these neighbors say did. It's going to be a real interesting viewing party of those of us who say, you know, we got to be fair. We got to stick to what we say. If making profit, purchasing land, splitting land, we're telling developers, don't buy, don't invest in York County, because this council said two weeks ago, it's a dirty thing to buy land, come in here and ask us to rezon it and try to make a profit. I mentioned that two weeks ago, saying, hey, we're setting, we shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't vote on those grounds, but this council did it anyway, told the gentleman, we don't want people buying land in York County under one zoning with the intention of rezoning it, come and asking us to do it. Concerned about how much profit someone's going to make on a piece of property. But that's not what we were elected to do, but that's what this body has chosen to put our hands in on. So, it's going to be interesting the next two weeks how your views are taken, your concerns are taken into. This rezoning's going to go through tonight, because we typically approve first reading. But please, ma'am, please, sir, come back in two weeks, and two weeks after that, to see how those who were voted in to make these decisions. And I'll be upfront, and I'm honest about it, whatever goes on. I talked to Tony today. I want to see him be successful, but at the same time, we want to be fair to everybody who comes here, who asks us to rezon, and one week we say no, next week we say yes to the same concept. So, please, ma'am, please, sir, in the next two weeks, y'all come back and continue to share your concerns and ask for answers. What's going to go on this property behind? How's it going to impact your community? How's it going to impact your roads? We fight day in and day out to keep up with making our roads drivable, safe. We want to make sure we're fair when people come in front of us. And I don't think we can say we're being fair to everyone. If we approve, if we don't approve one this, two weeks ago, and turn around and approve this one. And like I told Mr. Tony Smith when he called me today, I don't think we'll have a problem, but I think we go, I think we're going to have some issues. I think we're going to have some character issues. We're going to have some ethical issues if things go according to plan, because I'm expecting the same no vote out of the same ones that voted no two weeks ago. I don't think we'll get there, but that should be the precedent that we set. Two weeks ago, we were concerned about rezoning property that was going to set a precedent in an area. Staff said, no, it wouldn't set a precedent. But the vote that we took two weeks ago should set the precedent. You know, we get people say that they don't like increased density. If it stays the same now, only one house can go there. We rezon it, like I say, two houses can go there. And the gentleman did make a statement that he could currently put two homes on this property right now. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
So, if two homes can go there now, why are we rezoning it so that the same two homes can go there? Is it so it can be positioned differently?
Because you got two zonings.
Yeah, they would want two ownerships.
Two ownerships?
Yeah. It would have, the property would be under one ownership if you had two homes in that AGC district.
Well, it'll be interesting to see how this one turns out, but please, ma'am, please, sir, you're always welcome to come back and state your case and your concerns. I'll tell you, from the bottom of my heart, I listen to everybody that walks up here. And if I decide to vote for it, I'll tell you why I vote for it. And if I decide to vote no, I can be able to tell Mr. Smith why I decided to vote no. I think I'm man enough to do that. I've been up here long enough. I think I'm credible. I'm certainly honorable. And I'll tell you two sitting side by side, if I decide to vote yes, I can tell you why I voted yes. If I decide to vote no, I can tell Mr. Smith why I voted no. And I appreciate you all, council, giving me the opportunity to get that off my chest, but I knew it was coming.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Tommy, go ahead. Mr. Carron, would you please get Mr. Hamp's number, so I can call and meet with them?
Any other discussion?
Yes, please. Jonathan, can you educate me a little bit, please, on the splits? So, there are four splits on this property now, and there was mention that there could be a fifth split. Up to five splits can take place. Can you explain that to us, or to me, please?
Yes, sir. So, I think what the speaker before was referencing was, this parcel now used to be part of a larger parcel in the past, and has been subdivi, that larger parent parcel, we call it, has been subdivided a couple times over a period of decades or what have you, until we get to the arrangement that we have now. So, in our zoning code, there is a minor subdivision, which you are allowed to have up to six lots in a minor subdivision that can be accessed off an existing road. It can be administratively approved. It doesn't have to go to Planning Commission, all of that. A major subdivision is anything seven lots or greater. They have to be accessed internally. You need to have a county, up to county standard road built to have those lots accessed internally off of it. Has to be approved by Planning Commission as a preliminary plat. So, that's the difference here between that, that style of subdividing land.
So, there could be up to six different dwellings on all that property?
So, I don't know what the extent of the parent parcel was that eventually resulted in at least this parcel and several others that were referenced earlier tonight, but as far as this parcel goes, and the historical subdivisions that have been accumulated in the past, they're only allowed to subdivide so many times until they become a major subdivision over time. Otherwise, they're circumventing the county's ordinance, and you end up with piano key lots spread out across the county on high-speed, high-traffic roads. So, that's the limiting factor in having the difference between a major subdivision and a minor. They are proposing to do one additional minor subdivision here, making this lot into two. So, that would not have to go to Planning Commission. They would not have to meet some of the other standards in our land development code.
Okay, thank you. So, I actually spoke to Mr. Smith today as well, and shared with him that I would not be supporting this. I've learned some more tonight, which I'm thankful of. There are differences between this and what we voted on two weeks ago. So, we're talking about the splits. We have five acres that are AGC. We have one acre that's RUD. Those two points are different than what we dealt with two weeks ago. I think, for me, my vote at the last meeting was, I felt like there had not been any land over there, to our knowledge, after re-code, that had been rezoned from AGC to anything else. So, to me, I had, I had no issue with the water issue necessarily. My issue was that we would be setting a precedent if we changed the first plot of land from AGC to something differently. That's why I didn't support that. Building houses for profit, I'm not sure where that came from, but if one council member said that, this council did not say that. I do want to clarify that point. And then lobbying against Councilman Roddy or his district, to my knowledge, maybe it happened with one council member, but it did not, it did not happen with council, it didn't happen with me. So, I'm not sure where that came from. And I think we need to be careful what we're saying to other council members when we're trying to make a point. We all need to be sensitive to what we're saying, or not, but I would hope that we would be a little more cordial. Thank you.
We've had, everyone's going to get a chance to speak, and we're moving on. Mr., has everybody spoken once?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and speak. Jonathan, are you aware any water issue on this property?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. So, Bump, we made that, we asked that question. All right, so, okay, so, let me, let.
Staff didn't say anything about a water issue.
Let's, let's keep, let's let every council member have a chance to speak.
Well, let me go ahead and finish. There's differences between this property and what we reviewed last time. There was an opportunity, Bump, that you had, that you could have deferred that last time, too.
We deferred, we already had deferred twice.
Okay. Listen, you had an opportunity for it.
We deferred it twice. You weren't going to vote for it anyway.
It could have been deferred again, and you understand that.
You weren't going to vote for it anyway.
Tonight, we've got an opportunity here in regards to this property, that you've got adjoining properties that are, are zoned into what Mr. Smith is asking for. I think this fits into a practical solution for what we need to be up here, is looking at practical solutions for people that own properties. I think this, I will be supporting this tonight. And I am concerned, Bump, when you start talking about character, you've got to be careful how you speak.
If the shoe fits Tommy, Tom wear it.
Well, I tell you what, I think there's protocol, and I think you got to watch the way you speak.
This is what we're going to do, and I'm going to, I'm going to start putting the gavel down on this. We're not going to address each other personally. We're not going to attack each other personally, or I will take, I will take action in order to make that happen. Everybody up here's going to get a chance to speak. Let's be respectful of each other. Any council members who have not spoken yet who want to speak?
Well, I think I should be giving up, since my name.
I'll come back to you, Mr. Roddy, since your name was called out. Anyone else wish to speak who has not spoken yet?
I just have a simple statement. I will support this tonight, just because everybody says you do that on first reading. I am very concerned about rezoning from ag to RUD, anything from agriculture, anything, because it's, you're taking a chance. It's like playing the slot machines. So, that's all I'm going to say.
All right. Mr. Roddy, since your name was called, I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
I don't need a couple of minutes. I didn't call anybody's name in my delivery. I didn't call your name. I didn't call Tom's name. But I've said, if the shoe fits, wear it. So, I must have struck a nerve with something, somebody said, that didn't feel it was appropriate. And I don't need people telling me, I need to be sensitive of their feelings. You heard the neighbors say, why are we going from the bigger size zoning down to the small? Why aren't we rezoning from the smaller size, making it the same as the bigger size? That's an option. And when we raised issues about the soil situation, staff recommended approving it. There was no concern about the water or the blackjack soil. But we, council, said something about the blackjack soil and the water. We've never questioned any soil content or the type of soil on a property before we did a rezoning, but it came up two weeks ago. I hope people vote and go to second reading. I'm saying, yeah, get it to second reading so Tommy can have an opportunity to find out more of what he's going to have to deal with out of the neighbors or Mr. Smith. We always approve first reading. There's nothing wrong with it. I'm going to abstain from voting, but I don't need someone calling my name if I didn't call their name, especially in this arena, because I know the rules. I know what we've asked for in the past. I know what we're going to ask for in the future. So, I don't need freshmen, so to speak, young folks up here who think they know more than that they know, being very pompous up here, if you will. But we need to make sure we're voting on the facts, what supports why we're voting, and if I feel the need to make a comment, whether it's directed at someone, or if I call their name, but I'll never call a name. I'm too seasoned to have to call a name, but I know what you said two weeks ago, and I stated it. We can pull up the video and play it back. So, if you want to go tit for tat on these rezonings, we can do that, because I know the rules. I know what we voted for, and we were going from AGC to RUD. The same thing we're asking here today, so you can't say it's different. You can't say it's different. And I understand we're trying to work with something on a legal part, with combining the two zoning pieces of property, but it's still, the basis of the rezoning is to go from AGC to RUD. The basis, two weeks ago, was going from AGC to RUD. So, you can't say it's different. At the end of the day, we're charged with rezonings. And if, and I apologize, if I hurt your feelings, check your feelings at the door.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
Or don't say anything that you don't want to have come back up.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
No, let's move on, please. Every, every council member's had a chance to speak, and we have allowed some to speak twice. A couple of things I do want to make sure that everyone who's sitting here tonight understands, something that we usually say, and that I hear certain council members say that I didn't hear tonight. Anytime we have a rezoning come before a council, it requires three readings and a public hearing. We started tonight with the public hearing and the first reading. There are very few. There are very few rezonings that we have been a party to that our council hasn't unanimously approved first reading. In fact, the ones that have been talked about tonight did get first reading approval, even though they didn't meet the second or third reading approval. So I do want folks to understand that there are additional readings that are left on this rezoning. I do support first reading on this, as I have in the past. The way that I view rezonings is that they are each fact-specific. Every single one of them has very different factual considerations that apply to each one of them. And I do think that there are some differentiations from some of the ones that we've heard here tonight, including adjacency, including split zoning that we have on this parcel, and the condition of the property that exists there. So I do support first reading of this rezoning. And all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Sustained.
Motion carries six to one. We move now to item three, Public Hearing, Rezone Action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-13, tax map number 364-0000-051, to rezone from RMX 20 to RSF 30, .295 acre portion of a two-acre parcel in District 2. Mr. Buono.
Yes, this request is to have a slight down zone of a parcel so that a property line change can be accommodated. This is on St. Paul Church Road. So the area that's hatched there in blue is the area that's to be rezoned. They are proposing to have that property line changed so that the property to the south will take ownership of that area. So staff recommends approval with a condition, as does the Planning Commission, and that condition is a familiar one. It's that they shall record a subdivision within 90 days of the rezoning approval so that there's only one zoning district per parcel. So this application is consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. It's single-family residential on the future land use map. It's just a lot-line adjustment for this application.
Any questions for staff while we open public hearing?
Yeah, quick question on this. So the area is rezoned, so I'm not clear on why was it having to be rezoned on that one section?
So the property owner to the south is looking to acquire a property owner from the property owner to the north. So that area in blue is changing hands. So the property line is shifting.
Oh, okay. So this is, okay, I got you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing non-public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. We do not have any old business tonight. We do have new business. Item number one, council to approve the amended fiscal year '25 budget calendar.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Item number two, council to consider initiating a rezoning pursuant to York County Code of Ordinances 155.1137A1 to rezone 16 existing apartment and condominium communities within council districts 1 and 7 as listed in Exhibit A from the general commercial office and institutional or residential mix 20, RMX 20 districts to the residential mix 6, RMX 6 zoning district in order to eliminate their existing use non-affirmity. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions?
Yeah, so in regards to this, Jonathan, I know you and I, I got your message and then Diane and I spoke. We're doing this because of the changes we made to property that that when it come to new approval for townhomes and apartments, we brought it from three codes down to one, okay? And that one code currently, there's no property in the county that currently has this code. The reason, again, I'm speaking out loud about this, the reason we're doing this is that when we did it, we left some apartments and townhomes that were, we made them out of compliant based on the coding that they currently had. So this change is basically going to get them to the code that we stated they had to be. And the only reason we would be doing this, if they needed to go to do like, put a back deck on one of their condos or something along those lines. None of this will apply to any open property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so these are just apartments and existing townhome units?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Are there more of these to come in other districts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I spoke to Jonathan also.
I cannot.
Had the same, same answer.
Have the property owners who are affected by this rezoning been notified?
This is the initiation of the process. Once council approves, assuming that you do, that's when we would start notifying the property owners.
So for purposes of tonight, they weren't given any notice?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And this will require three additional readings in a public hearing?
Yes, it just kicks it off. The normal process of staff report, planning commission, three readings of council, and a public hearing still apply.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor, the motion say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Committee and other reports, Justice and Public Safety Committee Chairman Tommy Atkins.
Y'all snuck out in a party. I honestly ain't got nothing on it.
Okay, do we have any?
But anyway.
Do you have a report?
I'm going to say it was a very interesting meeting for the two of us as we were.
Yeah, I was somewhat unable to make it.
I'm sorry.
And we spoke about the records, and we're going to be making the shift on the rotational calls. York County is going to start paying those instead of the Highway Patrol. And they're going to keep everything enclosed, though, with the same money range as the Highway Patrol.
Any other comments? Anything else on the agenda? The record was the only item on the agenda. Okay. Thank you, sir. We do not have any citizen concerns. Do we have any council member, new non-agenda comments?
Yeah, I do.
Let's try to add.
So four weeks ago, we did a groundbreaking ceremony for the intersection at 160 and Highway 77. It's exciting. We've been working hard to get that done through RFATs, and it's exciting that we've launched the project. So since then, they've been clearing the ground. They're getting the, they're prepping it this time. Now, part of that design, as you can see, it's cleared off to the right. There's going to be a flyover that's going to, if you were going to get off to the right on the interstate going south, it's going to actually extend across the interstate and come on the other side of the interstate. Design of it is very unique, and again, we're excited to get this going. The other piece of the RFATs meeting, and this is a follow-up based on our RFATs meeting we had last week, the other part of this is that we're actually reviewing design for Selene's exit. Now, the Selene's exit, we're going to be looking at, I think there's five designs that we're looking at. We're going to be looking to do an approval of that roughly by June. Now, then it goes out to the public to see what was approved. We'll get public feedback, and then it comes back sometime in December for final approval. But again, there's a lot of work, and the steps that are going to happen is the approval process in order to push that new design out. Again, that was in our RFATs meeting, in the RFATs meeting of two weeks ago. Again, I want to make sure y'all updated on that. Thank you.
You want?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. So in future, in the future, may I request that council members be invited to those ceremonies? Particularly, that was my district. It's half Tom's district and half my district. So I just think it's just good etiquette to invite everybody.
Anyone else? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Roddy?
I want to reiterate to our planning and zoning chair at the very next committee meeting. Let's discuss, oh, Debbie, tiny homes. I think staff's been put on notice a while back and just two weeks ago. I know I'll be doing some extensive working over the next 30 days, so kind of be a hit or miss with my schedule. And also, with my ear to the ground out at New Indy, we're going to be dedicating a, I don't have the exact date, but I just overheard the conversation. We're dedicating a helipad on our property now that's available to EMS medics that if something bad happens, that a helicopter can land. We established a new helipad at New Indy that is going to benefit all of York County and partially Lancaster County if something tragic happens on five, five bones. Lancaster's still a very dangerous road. In the past, we had a helipad, but it had to go away. But we've gotten it back now, so this will be another asset to the community. And someone's time of need or crisis going on, I'll get that date and send it out if they're going to have anyone come. New Indy actually is in Christie's district, so I'm sure they may be reaching out to have her come say a few words. But this will be another asset in York County that's available for everyone in a time of need if something occurs that you need medical attention, have to be flown or airlifted.
Madam Chair, so Rick Lee served on county council for eight years, and just a few weeks ago, he received the highest civilian honor in South Carolina from the governor that ordered the Palmetto, so I just wanted to recognize him for that prestigious award. Secondly, Councilman Roddy just mentioned tiny homes, and I've learned that tiny homes actually can be built in the unincorporated areas of the county. They can't be built in clusters, I think is my understanding. But I was going to wait until, I was asked to wait until our new county manager was on board next week to bring this up at the next council meeting. But I'd like to refer the conversation of affordable and attainable houses to our committee, and we work on putting a working group together in the community. Reached out to, I won't mention this person's name, to see if they would oversee it, but it would pull together employers, school district, not-for-profits, and community members to help draft something that is pretty encompassing in addition to tiny homes. So anyway.
Which committee is that, that you want to refer that to?
Health and Environmental Services.
Is that housing?
Mine, bump, Tom's.
Does that cover housing? What I'd like, what I'd like for us to do, the council is receptive to this because we do have our new county manager joining us in a week, and we have a strategic plan that we're going to put together, is for us to allow him to get on board. Unless it's a specific finite zoning request or something that's very limited, something like an affordable housing topic is a pretty big topic. But that'd be something that's included as part of our strategic plan so that we get some buy-in and understanding from a full council before we refer that to committee. I think, I think from what I've understood from council is that we're all eager to go ahead and have that strategic planning session as soon as we can. So I don't think that we'll belabor the point too much, but my recommendation would be for us to at least have a conversation collectively before we refer those big-ticket items to to committee, including, including tiny homes, which I guess falls into the same category as the affordable housing. Are there any other comments or questions, non-agenda, Mr. Smith?
I'd like to thank the Lord for breath and giving us one beautiful Easter.
Amen.
Amen to that.
So I just want to reiterate what Ms. Cloninger said about the Highway 160 interchange groundbreaking because we all were asked to forego our C funds for the next three years. And so I believe that if we, if we felt that that wasn't important enough interchange to give up our own district's funding for three years, we're taking away from individual districts to put everything into one intersection, we should have been considered in that imitation. The second thing is that I would like to refer a note, the note I say tonight, we had a couple of no-through-truck signs that have been installed. And maybe all of us have a situation where we need no-through trucks, but I have two specifics that I've been working on now for a couple of years, and those seem to just slide right through, so I'm going to talk to you about how you got that done. But I'd like for the zoning committee to take that up because in our situation, we have no-through-trucks neat signs needed because of concrete plants and concrete trucks on very small roads that are, that were never meant for these, that level of trucks. So, and the other thing that I would like to do is just thank the first responders in York County. And it's, the bigger you grow, the more things you have to attend to. And in the Lake Wally District, on the Lake Wally side of District 2, I should say, we have had two home fires that were major and a very bad traffic accident in the last two weeks. So those guys have been spot on, the River Hills EMS, Piedmont, and also Bethel and the the other mutual aid fire departments that responded to those things, which are, a lot of times, I've heard from residents who were actually there before, the first responders were there, and they've seen things that they will never unsee. So it's been a, it's been a kind of a rough couple of weeks.
All right. I've mentioned this at our last council meeting. There is an issue, and one of the commitments that we made as a council is that we would take up issues that came up in RECODE. This one's a very finite one that can be voted up or down on council. I mentioned it last week. And so what I intend to do at the next council meeting, just so that no one's caught off guard, is to put up for title only a provision for in the industrial section, which is the highest, most onerous zoning classification. We allow petroleum bulk stations and terminals. We allow warehousing and wholesale, warehousing and distribution by special exception. We also allow composting, hazardous waste storage treatment facilities, incinerators, landfills, recovered materials processing facilities. What we don't allow is motor vehicle, recreational, or boat storage, which to me is completely less onerous. I'd much rather have that in an industrial site than mine. I intend to put that up as a title, reading only. If council doesn't support it, it can be voted down, and we don't move it forward, or we can decide if it needs further amendment or investigation. We could do that, but I tend to put that forward and didn't want anyone to be caught by surprise. The other issue is the home occupation designation in our zoning code. We have had several folks, I know in my district and I know in some other folks' districts, who brought to my attention that we, through RECODE, we may have not have left as much flexibility in that. I think we've also taken a position, and I've heard council say before, that when it comes to zoning, if there's anyone who sells anything out of their garage, if they have products that they sell in their garage that that converts it to immediately to commercial. And so I think that there have been some folks, I know in Mr. Atkins' district, I know in mine, especially those that have significant amount of RUD district where they've been working out of their homes. They aren't retail locations. They're locations where they simply work out of their home and drive their truck to go do service things. I would like for us to explore more flexibility for folks to continue to do that. That's one of the best ways that we can support small business. I get the situations where you have somebody who tries to open up their own business in a neighborhood that has an HOA, and they have people coming to their house, and there's nowhere to park. Obviously, that's not what I'm talking about here. What I'm talking about are people that own acreage, people that own 20 acres who are trying to do a small business that they do, giving at least flexibility. And I get it that we have to be fact-specific. What works for one area doesn't work for another area. But we have a lot of rural area in my district, in Mr. Atkins' district, and in Ms. Love's district that folks ought to be able to have as much flexibility as they can with their land, and perhaps considering a special exception for that would give some flexibility that still requires folks to take a look at it, see if it's a good fit, but that at least builds in something in the code that gives us some flexibility instead of just a flat-out no. So I would like to refer that to the Planning and Zoning Committee for study if you're receptive to receiving that. Ms. Cloninger, all right.
So on the title only for the industrial, are you going to send us like some details on that?
It'll be on the agenda, yeah, and I'll share that. And if we feel like that there needs to be additional consideration, we can, we can forward that. It's just such a simple thing that I would like to propose it.
I wouldn't, I didn't keep up with everything you said, so I just won't be sure.
I'll make sure that you guys, that will be something that will be out on an agenda.
I was thinking you said in the beginning you were going to wait until the county manager was on board to address that, but now you've asked it to go to planning and zoning?
No, that's just a zoning issue with RECODE, not, not a strategic planning initiative. I would think affordable housing is a strategic planning initiative. I don't know of a specific, if you have a specific ordinance that you want to have revisited, I think that's something that we could take on, but a strategic planning initiative may just at least want to have some. Is there anything in the zoning code that speaks of tiny homes?
Yeah.
So specifically, there is nothing that addresses tiny homes in the zoning code. Now, in the original draft, there was a tiny home court that would be a new use that would allow a single parcel to play host to multiple tiny homes. But there is currently nothing in the zoning ordinance that restricts or sets a minimum dwelling size for homes. In the state of South Carolina, the building code has adopted an appendix that allows for tiny homes under certain code requirements.
Just so I understand your comments and so that I make sure that I'm fair to the, to the other considerations that have been brought up tonight, there's not a zoning, basically, you can put a tiny home on your property. You're just subject to the same zoning classifications, like you have one home, two of, an RUD.
zoning classifications, like you have one home to an RUD acre, you can make it a tiny home, or you can make it a big home?
That's correct. So the only change would be if there was a desire to expand that to have more than one home on a parcel.
Okay. Any other comments from council, or any other questions about the referrals that we made to any of the committees, or any other concerns? All right. I don't believe that we have-
We have nothing for executive session.
We do not have anything for executive session, but a request was made, I think it's appropriate that we have a standing item on our, all our executive sessions for a litigation update moving forward. So we'll do that moving forward.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.